First.
Yes.
By doing this, to the plan of the United States of America, since we're probably what's the same, one nation, one pride, freedom, liberty and justice. Okay. You all have the minutes in front of us from the last planning board meeting, November first.
Don't we start with the public hearing?
We need to do the minutes first and then we'll go to the public hearing. But if you want us to skip the minutes. Okay, everybody get a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
November first.
Yes.
Have a motion to approve it, Miss Britton?
Yes, I have.
Motion to approve.
Motion second.
All in favor?
I was in here.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so the, um, we need to open the public hearing for application. The S P number twelve. Levi Fishman uses his home as a part-time, short-term tourist rental home.
Levi's in on the meeting now, just to let you know.
Just Levi, anybody else?
I don't see anybody at the moment, but. Uh, two participants here.
That's you and Levi, probably.
Us and them.
So, yeah, Levi's the only one on at the moment.
Levi, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Big, okay, so the public hearing is open. I know there's one person that's gonna call in, one of your neighbors. Can you just give the board a little quick update on your project? Some of the members weren't here last month.
Uh, sure, we, um, you know, wanna, wanna use our, our home as a, uh, part-time, short-term rental. Um, we've had the, a couple of trees trimmed in the yard, the roof replaced. We've had some insulation put in the attic. Uh, we've had conversations with a couple of property managers to, uh, find the right person to help us manage the property while we're there. Um, uh, I'm not sure what, uh, what other updates would be, uh, helpful, but we've, you know, been filling out the paperwork and trying to just, uh, you know, follow all the, all the requests that are made of us throughout the process.
Okay, so you have a local property manager? You've got one under contract or one that you're talking to to run away or not here?
Uh, it, it's not under, not under, uh, contract yet, but, um, we have been talking to, uh, to somebody local there who would, uh, who would help us manage the, the property.
Okay, so that, that's gonna be a requirement of the permit and, uh, you're gonna have to give that information to the code enforcement officer. Right, before you issue the permit, Carl?
Yes.
Yes.
I have to do inspection before anyhow.
Right, right, right.
Is that gonna be done at the time of the inspection?
By safety inspection.
Yeah, yes. So you're gonna have to inspect the premises, you're gonna get the local contact, Carl, and keep that in your file so you have that in case something happens?
Most certainly.
Right? And, uh, anything else that they're gonna upgrade on the house, on the outside of the house or anything, nothing, right?
Nothing.
Parking is fine, right? The lighting is fine and no other issues?
I haven't, that, that, I haven't done that type of inspection yet.
Right.
I only do it after he gets permission to do so.
Right, you're gonna do all that, though?
Yes, oh, yeah. It get handled like a bad bread and butter, same way.
We, we have one contact that we got, um, I'll read it. This, this is from Judy Sugar. Ninety-one Wagner Avenue, Fleischmann's. This is to inform you of our protest to our neighbor sixty, uh, sixty-seven Wagner, Mr. Fishman and Ms. Jappers, becoming a short-term rental unit. That's all it says. It doesn't really give any other information. I talked to, uh, Judy today, I gave her the link for the meeting. I asked her to, um, call in and if she had any questions to, to get them, you know, in the record, if they had concerns about lighting or parking or, and I, you know, I don't, I don't see her logged on yet. Okay, I, and I just followed up with a conversation at quarter to six with her and I gave her the link, the meeting. So maybe, you know, I.
Perhaps their concerns were addressed or they didn't deem it.
Yeah, I don't.
Their time.
Yeah, their concerns. You know, lighting, parking, um, you know, typical concerns, it's almost every time we do something.
But the, uh, Levi, you're not proposing any additional lighting than what's existing at the current residence?
Uh, no, we weren't, no.
Okay. And there's street lights on Wagner, yes?
Yes. Right, street lights?
Yeah, there was some.
Addition, yeah.
Yeah.
Certain amount of ambient light already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's existing parking, right, Carl, that you feel is sufficient?
Excuse me?
There's sufficient parking at the.
Oh, yes, 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 yes. Didn't I just pay for your sketch?
Yeah, we got a sketch.
Yeah.
I'm just checking with you.
You wanna verify that all the possible concerns are.
Yeah.
You're looking.
No, we talked about them. Um, now, Ken, we, we can't do the, uh, after we close the public hearing, right?
That's correct, you guys will close the public hearing and then complete the application process.
So, so I just talked to this woman like twenty minutes ago.
That might be her. Yep, that's her.
Judy, is that you?
Yeah. Yes.
Yep.
Good connection.
She doesn't have her mic on.
Turn your mic on, Judy.
Okay.
Hi. So, both you and your neighbor are on this meeting by Zoom. Can you, uh, verbalize what your concerns are to the board and maybe we can get some response from your neighbor and we have the code enforcement officer here too.
Oh, okay. Um, I guess all-around feeling of things not being under control or, or having no place to go with, uh, problems. So, I would say, um, number one, the fire pit out the back. Um, the preceding people, there was a huge fire pit. There was huge bonfire behind the house, not ten feet away from the house. And their house being very close to mine and mine being an old wooden house as well. And they having lots of vegetation, huge trees overhanging. That huge fire is a, a menace to my house. And when I'm not there, I kinda don't even wanna think about the fact that there are people, uh, running a fire outside the house. Um, that's one, one major one. Another one is, um, pets. I've, I've seen pets, I've seen, I don't know what the guidelines are and there's at one point where there was somebody who came. You know, if I had a neighbor who had a big dog, obviously I go over to the neighbor and I speak to the neighbor and the dog is being controlled and, and so forth, there's someone to answer to. But when somebody comes for a short time with a big dog, um, on an open property, I'm, I'm worried about pets. And, um, also where they, I mean, I could go on. Parking, um, lots of parking on the property next to mine. And, um, and I guess noise, and that's about it.
That's it?
Yeah, well. Not, I'm sure I could come up with some more, but.
Okay. Um, Levi, what about the fire pit? What, what about the fire pit and the overhanging trees?
Well, there's no bearing with this, 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 this thing yet or, that is something I would have to check over.
We did, we did have some trees, uh, trimmed back and removed over the summer, um, because we were getting roofwork done, so we didn't want them hanging over the house or the, or the shed, the, um, you know, the out, the, uh, shed that's a few feet away from the house. Uh, so we did trim back a lot of the, some of the trees and took down two whole trees. Um, and for a fire pit, we have a, uh, we have a small fire pit. I think we've only used it once since we've been there. The other, the other owners might have had a larger fire pit that was used more frequently, but, uh, we have only used ours, I think, once and it's not a, it's, uh, not a permanent fire pit, it's not like a hole in the ground, it's, it's one of these ones that's, you know, metal that you can store, uh, when it's not being used. But it's good for about, uh, you know, one, um, uh, one package of firewood to burn at a time. But like I said, I, I, I can't speak to what the previous owners did. Um, uh, but we've only, we've only had the fire pit out once.
Okay, Carl, that would be something that you would look into when you did your inspection, correct?
That's correct.
Right. What, what about the fact?
I don't see a reason, honestly, I mean, we're talking about, it's this very, it's this cute but small backyard there toward, you know, between the back of the house, the overhanging trees and the river. And then my house is, you know, within, when my neighbors were there, I would, you know, I could practice, I just, I could use an extension cord from my house to their house when I had power outage, that's how close our properties are. So any fire that's in the back of that house is quite likely in the back of my house. So I don't see, it's, it's very, I asked Billy to come look at it when there was the, the fire pit there and he said it's a bit close to the back of their house. I don't see why, why have that? If you didn't have that, that would make me feel a whole lot better.
So we're gonna have the code enforcement officer look into the fire pit issue, right, Carl, when you do your inspection?
Most certainly.
And if it's too close to the structure or the neighbor's structure, basically you're gonna tell them that they can't use it 'cause it's not safe?
I have to see that fire pit at all, I mean, I don't need much, you know?
Right, right, right.
And if it's a movable device, then maybe there could be an area, you know, it can't be closer than this.
Right.
But you and, you and I know that when, you know, the different, because we're talking about short-term rental, right? When, when you have a neighbor there, you can speak to the neighbor and you expect them to go about what you spoke to them about, say, in the summer or months ago. But if you have different people each time and you just have this movable fire pit for them to, let, let's just put it this way, you know, the house on the other side of my house, they rented, this was before I was born, they rented that house to skiers. And those skiers stopped that fireplace so much, they burnt that house down. That was a short-term rental. So, that's what happens when you have somebody who's there for a short time and perhaps doesn't know what they're doing as far as fire.
So, so I'm not a fireman, you're a fireman?
Um, I have to see this.
Right, right. So we're gonna have the code enforcement officer inspect the fire pit, right, Carl? I mean, that's all we can say.
Yeah, yeah.
Hmm.
They can hold this thing to the front or where is the, the, the?
I mean, unless there's a village prohibition on, you know, fires.
Right.
Yeah, well, we do.
They would have to meet those rules.
Right.
Yeah, we have these rules, we have those rules, and then you expect me to, to, uh, be comfortable with this whole situation when you and I both know that I have a big wooden house that I'm not gonna be at during the times of these rentals. And obviously this would, this is reasonable for this to worry me, that they even have this as a, you know, option on the rental. I mean.
Okay, so the fire pit's gonna be inspected by the code enforcement officer if he feels it too close. You're also a fireman, right, Carl?
Yeah, yes.
Right, he's also a fireman.
Mm-hmm.
Levi, what about pets? There was a concern about, are pets allowed in a rental?
Uh, well, we hadn't, we hadn't, uh, made a choice on that. We personally own a dog, but, uh, I, if, if having, uh, you know, pets around would make neighbors uncomfortable, uh, you know, most Airbnbs don't allow pets in there in the, in the first place. So if that's gonna be an issue, we could, we can certainly work with the, whatever property manager we, we end up working with to make sure that's part of the, uh, rules for people to rent a house.
That'd be good.
Okay, okay, good. And the, uh, the, the parking has been looked at by the code enforcement officer and he's comfortable with the number of spaces, right, Carl? You've said that several times?
Yes, I have.
How many, how many spaces?
Three.
Three spaces, Judy, spot for three cars on the property.
So, really, I, I've never seen that, I mean, Mrs. Schlitter used to park, you know, on the o- opposite side to that house from where my house is. And since, uh, Mr. Fishman has the property, he now parks on the other side next to my property, is that where all the cars are gonna be?
There's, there's space for about three cars to fit in a long driveway that leads up to the shed on the opposite side of the house from your house.
Okay.
The only, the only time I park on the, on the other side is when we've had work done, there may have been a, like a dumpster or something on the other side or a worker's truck, but, uh, by and large, uh, we park on the, on the side opposite your house. And we had, uh, some people, we had family in for Thanksgiving and, you know, two cars were able to fit there with lots of space that we could, we could have all pulled up and had a third car fit well off the street and not on the, the side of the house that's next to yours.
All right, well, that's probably not too difficult anyway. Well, um, and what about garbage? How are you handling garbage?
Uh, well, right now we have bi-weekly pickup with, uh, Bloomville because we're not there, uh, frequently enough for weekly pickups, but, uh, once we have guests, we'll probably use, um, somebody, uh, the woman we spoke to, her name is Kimberly. She said she works with a, a gentleman named Billy who manages garbage on other properties that will pick it up from the house and take it to the transfer station, uh, or, or wherever it, wherever it goes, but would be somebody to pick it up when guests leave, so we're not just waiting for a weekly, uh, pickup from, uh, you know, from a company.
So, when would it, you know, because this is, this, um, Wagner Avenue, historically it gets strewn with garbage, I mean, you know, we have bear invasion. And, you know, on my property, of course, we, we don't leave garbage out at all anymore, we do it completely ourselves. So, the problem is leaving it out, like, how, how are you gonna do that?
Uh, from what I understand, uh, Kimberly suggested, uh, garbage cans that are, that are bear-proof, I don't know if they lock or if they, or something, um, but she, uh, you know, like I said, she has about twenty other properties that she manages in and around Fleischmann's and Margaretville. Um, and she, what her recommendation was not to use the, you know, one of these companies, but to have somebody come by and pick it up when the guests, uh, leave, you know, when the house is gonna be cleaned, that's when somebody would come by and get the garbage. So it wouldn't be left out overnight, it wouldn't be pulled out at, you know, six in the morning when people leave. Somebody would come by and, and help manage the, the pickup and disposal of the garbage.
That'd be good.
So, the local garbage man, Billy Haynes, right?
Mm-hmm.
He does do that, he goes around and he contracts with people and he does pick up a lot of garbage. Right, I mean, I see him all the time with the garbage. So that would be, that would be a good choice for you, Levi.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree, I, you know, our experience with Bloomville, because we've, we've only been up there for a few months and because we've had bi-weekly pickup, if we're not there at the right time, I've learned that, you know, we just have to take the garbage with us anyway, so I, that's why we're moving in that, we wanna move in that direction so we can have, and also more flexibility if somebody wants to, you know, uh, leave on a Tuesday and garbage with Bloomville isn't picked up till Friday, it just doesn't make sense, uh, to, to keep with those companies. Uh, we'd rather have somebody who can come by, uh, and work with the property manager to know when the next guests are coming, um, so they can, they can coordinate the garbage pickup.
Have you made it clear to your, uh, guests that they shouldn't be throwing garbage in the river?
Uh, no, we haven't had any, any guests yet, we haven't put, we haven't listed our property on any, uh, any sites, uh, you know, we wanted to make sure that, before we took that step, to make sure that people were comfortable with us, uh, doing this and hear any concerns and be able to work that into whatever description we have of the property, uh, uh, rules for the house. Um, I mean, I would, I would hope people that know not to throw garbage in the, in the creek, uh, but, um, if people, if people do another place, another house around there, um, you know, it's good to know, so you know, to, uh, make sure that's, you know, explicitly clear.
Oh, yeah.
For our guests, whoever would stay.
Yep, yep. And, um, so is there, are there any guidelines as to how loud, like understandably, I'm, I'm, I don't know that I'm gonna be up there for another couple of months or something, so summer is more my concern than winter, but as far as, uh, noise, 'cause we're, again, you're my closest neighbor, so what goes on there, I hear.
Sure.
Do we have the guidelines about that?
Uh, I don't know if there are noise regulations for the, for the village, but again, we can have, um, you know, again, if that's been a concern with previous renters, with the previous owners, if you had, uh, noise issues with anybody staying at the house, um, uh, again, we could, you know, certainly make it clear that after whatever hour it might be, ten o'clock, whatever it is, that seems reasonable, but.
Well, it's the weekend, eleven o'clock, I mean, I'm not.
Um, and, and also, you know, we're, we're looking at this mostly as a, as a winter thing, we, we plan on using the summers to, uh, do renovations to the house, whether it's just painting the outside or fixing up something, and it would be mostly, um, uh, fall and winter rentals, but, you know, for the, for the, for the skiing and for, um, you know, anything else around there and, you know, other winter activities. Um, so, it's, it's, um, not gonna be rented as much probably in the, in the summer months.
Oh, that's nice to know. Are they, um, so are you using, or is that still usable, that fireplace in the attic?
No, I don't think that's, I don't think that's usable, uh, we, we'd never even considered using it. When we had the roof replaced, um, we, one of the, we, we thought about having it taken out completely, but we just, we were more concerned with getting the roof completely done, but we have no intention of using that. And guests wouldn't even be allowed up into the attic. Uh, the door locks in the house, so that's one of the rooms that they wouldn't even be allowed into, so that wouldn't even be, uh, uh, there'd be no access to that, uh, that old fireplace anyway.
Okay, well, so that just really leaves, um, my concern about, um, I guess that you don't, we're, we're good at keeping track of that garbage and that we don't set fire to the houses.
Yeah, I think we'd also like to avoid setting fire to the houses.
Yeah.
It's in all of our best.
Boo, boo, unset fire.
Um, so, the good thing about the noise with the neighbors is he's saying it's mostly gonna be in the winter when your, your windows are all gonna be closed and it's not summertime where noise can easily pass from one house to the other. I think the big concern that you had, Judy, was the fire pit that hasn't been answered and we're gonna check into that with the code enforcement officer and make sure that's a safe situation, he's also a fireman. Um, and I, I think Levi has answered all your questions. Um, do you have anything else in closing?
No, I'm sure, so, and, well, I guess if there are concerns, if there are, um, 'cause I've, I've had people, um, 'cause I do have family who goes up there during the winter, if not myself, who will say, uh, there's this going on next door, what is my recourse? I contact you, Mr. Fishman, or what do I do?
Yeah, you could, I, I'm happy to give you my, uh, my cell number, so you could, you could contact me, but once we, um, contract with our, with a property manager up there, they would probably be the local point of contact, so if somebody needs to get out there quickly for something, um.
That would be good.
They, they can be the ones, um, to, to be able to address any concerns of the house much quicker, you know, we live in, uh, the, part of the time we live in Queens, so I can't, you know, hop in, it takes me two and a half hours to get there, so, um, uh, what, you know, like I said, once, that's why we're, we're also looking at a property manager to make sure we have somebody who's there that can, that can respond quickly for any concerns that come up from neighbors.
Yeah, that'd be good.
So, so the good thing is we have a code enforcement officer, if, uh, if Mr. Fishman doesn't meet your expectations and you feel like he's fallen down on the project a little bit, you could always contact Carl, our code enforcement officer. Why are you shaking your head?
Unfortunately, I have experience with Carl as a code enforcement officer. I have a living room, quote unquote, behind my house that he was the code enforcement officer on. So, we have a, a bad history there as far as enforcing codes. But I think what would be good is if you just didn't have that fire pit at all.
Right, so all I can do is use the resources that are put in front of me at this table and Carl is the code enforcement officer, okay? Okay, is anybody, anybody else in the public wanna speak on this matter? There, there's nobody else here, by the way, except, uh, a, a few folks from the village and the county planning department that helps us.
Oh, okay, hello, Fleischmann Village.
Do, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes, I have.
Motion, second?
Motion.
Okay, the public hearing is closed, we're gonna move on with our regular business. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, thank you.
We, we don't have a lot on the agenda, other than those. One other item we're gonna talk about.
I have a couple items I wanna drop over there.
Okay, so let's finish this, um, how does everybody feel about the, uh, the application? Any concerns, major concerns? Jumping out at anyone? I mean, we're gonna have Carl do the fire pit, that's one thing for safety, I think that's okay. We have a short environmental assessment form that you received and you looked at.
That's correct.
There's really no environmental concerns because there's no changes.
Tonight you're gonna learn about this.
Right, so as far as like reading that aloud and doing part two, I think we can simply, if one of you guys wants to make a motion, or, no, I'm sorry, one of you folks wants to make a motion saying that, um, we will get a negative declaration, uh, there are no environmental impacts on this project or this application. Does anybody wanna make that motion?
Yes, uh, okay.
Who made that motion? In the second?
Also.
Second, too?
Sure.
All in favor?
Right.
Yeah, right, we're okay with doing that, right, Ken? Because there's really no environmental.
Yes, many of my boards, and these questions, I mean, even if it was, you know, these questions are what you receive, you know, every time you go through this, um, some projects where you're, you know, this is an existing building and it's really just an alteration of the use, um, so I think, yeah, that's more than appropriate.
Okay. Okay, so we have action on this application for Mr. Fishman to use his home as a part-time, short-term, tourist rental home. And do we have any further discussion from the board?
No.
Does someone wanna make a motion, either approving or disapproving application? Approved?
Yes.
We made a motion to approve, second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
No.
All right, Mr. Fishman, it's approved, okay?
Wonderful, thank you very much, and we'll, um, as soon as we have a, a property manager under contract, I'll make sure everybody who would need that phone number would, uh, would be able to contact that person too.
Okay, be great, before you, uh, you start leasing it and using it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Follow all those conditions, get Carl out there and, and finish that up, okay, so?
Yeah, we're, we're not, we're not gonna lease it until we, until we have all of our, all of our, until we've dotted all of our i's and crossed all of our t's and made sure that everyone who's, who needs to come and look at the place for any sort of, any sort of, you know, health, safety reasons can do that.
So is that Airbnb or is that a rental agency in Fleischmann's?
Uh, it'd be on Airbnb, but through, through, through a property manager who's, uh, what's called a super host, um, so they would, uh, they would, you know, our listing would, would be part of their, you know, suite of, uh, of properties that they manage up around there.
Oh, I never, I didn't understand that, I thought Airbnb was simply online, I didn't realize.
Okay, can you guys finish this conversation, um, privately? 'Cause it doesn't really involve us, we have some other business.
I thought it did.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Levi, I'll get in contact with you by email tomorrow.
All right, sounds good, Carl, thank you very much.
Okay, to make an appointment to inspect your building.
All right.
Okay?
All right, sounds good.
All right, let's move on, um, number three, site plan review for restaurant at Maxville Theater, for your information only, no action needed as takeout restaurants do not need site plan according to zoning law. Um, this is something that we need to discuss, can't you send an email about this today? Or, go ahead, Winfer, you have something to say?
Yeah, I, I'm, the.
Can I say something? It is, it is supposed to be a ball, okay, it's being used for same, practically the same purpose.
I'm with you, Carl.
So therefore, I should need any, anything at the planning board, sorry.
Sorry, you were saying?
You know, from a technical point of view, I misread the zoning law.
Okay.
And it, it, the, it's located in the mixed-use district and the schedule does not have a provision for an allowable use. So there's a technical, uh, issue there, and so as a result of that, I'm asking on behalf of the village to, uh, exercise our right to waive the site plan review for this property as it is a village-owned property. So I'm, I'm requesting that, uh, that waiver.
So, um, when, when you look at the zoning, and this is one of the things we're gonna look at with the new committee, it kind of changed the zoning to make it better to use, right? better to use, right?
Right.
In the mixed use, it it allows a restaurant right with site plan approval, but it doesn't allow a restaurant that has takeout, according to the way this law is written.
Uh, okay, according to New York State definition, a restaurant takeout is a same same uh classification.
Well, yeah, well, what I think, Carl.
See, I'm going by the code.
Yeah, yeah, I know, and this that's what this code says.
I know what that says, yes.
Local code has a requirement, but just let me finish, okay?
Yes.
I think because of the changes in COVID and the changes of the way people are eating, and there's more takeout now rather than sitting in restaurants, and the fact that it was a pizza parlor, right, and as a history of a pizza parlor.
Right.
I would agree with Winford saying that we would waive a right to review as long as we don't contaminate these regulations by doing something like that, Ken.
Uh, no, I mean, I think what I had talked about with the mayor was was, you know, if the if the village isn't subject to its own zoning law, there's a process they can do amongst the village trustees to to say that the 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 benefit to it outweighs the detriment to the to everything, and they can waive that and say, we're not subject to zoning law. We're not subject to our own zoning law, so that's even a waiver you guys would issue.
I'm just letting it work out, you get.
But to your point, and and what you stated with with COVID and all of that, that's something that, you know, I I guess if they wanted to if if it was deemed that it's not allowed use or that expiration of the use had been there, I'm not sure whether it was last a pizza parlor. I think your guy's law has two years, maybe, for the sunset.
It's been longer than that.
Longer than that. So I all I can do is tell you what your code is. I'm not trying to make it difficult.
I understand. There's no bearing on it.
Well, there's a state code. Your local code takes precedence.
What is the state code?
For zoning, it does. The building code is its own different code. We don't have a building code. We just have a zoning code. As far as my understanding, I don't know anything about the building code. I'll be the first one to tell you.
So this place has sit down at one point or another, hopefully, if this gentleman would like to have some a couple of tables. That would be wonderful.
Well, see, if he had a table.
They'll have the room for that.
If 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 it wasn't, it's just a takeout only, it would be allowed by coming to this board.
No way. Like, if he if he had tables, then he'd have to come in for a review.
It says a takeout only is prohibited.
Right, but with takeout.
So that's that might change with the with the new zoning.
Yeah, we're gonna we're gonna look at all these uses, and that one right there just jumps out at you. I mean, takeout is a lot less use than people going and sitting down and parking for a long time and
Get away a few spots because people are leaving.
It was, you know, what Carl said, it was a pizza place at one time with tables, so.
Yeah, that time they had tables.
You know, but now I understand that it's kind of split with the office, and it may not be enough for my personal.
So the village board is willing to go through after the waiver. Is there anything the planning board has to do, Ken?
No, I mean, it's really the village board saying that they're not subject to their zoning law, that they're immune from local zoning and 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 choosing to do that. So certain entities are completely immune. A state like state colleges, they don't they don't do building permits, they don't do zoning approvals, they don't, they they work through themselves. They have some division of code that they work with. Um a town operating, you know, if if the village was doing something in the town, you're subject to that town's regulations. But if a village is doing something in it or a town or a village within their own municipality, the state has court cases that show a a test, the tests for for immunity. So it would be like a resolution or a motion, at least of your board um to deem that. Now, if for some reason the board isn't amenable to that, we need to look for another solution. Um, you know, that's something either through the zoning law or maybe through some allowance through COVID, some you guys can maybe issue a waiver on that time period because of the extenuating circumstances of the zoning board of appeals could.
Right.
We're kind of kind of making our own path, so maybe, you know, maybe the the village attorney weighs in. I don't want to make it more than it has to be, but
Right.
Um, I think there's some
It's just a place that people, we need a business in the village, and let's just try to be amenable to that without a lot of rigmarole. Sorry, but I heard a lot of like, a lot of rigmarole.
What we're trying to do is look for the easiest solution for the village.
I understand that there's no businesses, and we need businesses, so let's just cut
You want good businesses. You don't want businesses to fail as the result of haste.
Well, you know what? A lot of the rigmarole is what the state we're in now, unfortunately, all right?
Maybe planning isn't your thing, sir.
Well, I'm just telling you.
Well, let's back up.
Yeah.
Ken's here to help us.
This is a dead village, and we need it to get better.
Right, right. Ken's here to help us, and I know local residents want to see more business, and that's why we have this committee set up to review the zoning. And uh at our first meeting, what came out from, I was listening to what everybody said, they want to make it easier to have businesses here. Right? It's too complex, people said. The applications are too large. And I say they're not filled out right, but you know, so there's this whole discussion. But Carl, I I think uh I I think it's right. It was a it was a business. You're gonna apply for the waiver, Winford. Right? The board's gonna do it, and we have to take no action at this point. Okay, is everybody okay with that? Okay, um do we have anything else to come before the meeting? Number four?
I have some. Then you finish with your 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 stuff.
Well, we're we're at anything else.
Anything? Okay, I know I know a delegate coming to agrees with me, but stop your stop your uh uh short form. Because you're liable for lawsuits with that.
Okay, you can just maybe you don't need to throw it at me.
Okay.
Stop it. So stop your short form.
That's right. This, most of your stuff is type two. Type two does not need a short form. Period. Type one does, but not type two. Okay, the first sentence tells you the whole darn thing in here, but I uh Mark Redd, okay?
The the first sentence.
I know the lawyer even even misinformed the village on that. He better go back to school, too. That's why they go to school and learn things.
Carl, what what exactly is this?
That is that is uh New York State code codes and rules and legislation. Okay, which is uh hasn't got that many pages, okay? I just took the one out for for the type two.
Oh.
Okay, type one is is the you do, you know, where you need your 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 short form. And this explains actually what does not need the, in fact, if you look at it, uh the third page. The fourth page? Most of the pages, I I I had highlighted that the the the, oh, here we go. That there, yes, that's right, yeah. That's it. See, that's not me doing it. It's a commercial. And also, this, everybody, all of this does not need type that type two, okay? So you can take it home and study it.
So so obviously, not everyone at this table is that familiar with this seeker form. Right?
That's correct.
Obviously.
That's correct.
So
See, that's not an easy thing.
Yeah, so what you're saying, if I understand you, because I I didn't really get a chance to read this till right now.
That's what I'm saying. You do it, take it home and read it.
That certain applications don't require the seeker form.
Correct.
That's what you're saying.
That's correct.
Okay. And um those applications were all mentioned in this document, and I see the date of this document is two thousand eighteen. So there's been nothing amended from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-one?
This is amended as of uh two thousand uh
Well, it's a current registration.
It's a current current one from uh
Because the code on the last page, it says amended New York State registered July eighteen, two thousand eighteen.
Two thousand eighteen, okay, yeah, that's
So that's the last.
You're right, right.
So I I don't know if anything's happened from two thousand eighteen.
It hasn't. I don't want to get in an argument because he doesn't agree with me, but what you don't see on a type-two list is any approval from the planning board. Every site plan or special permit or zoning approval requires is what they call an unlisted action. So they don't spell them all out, but when you're referring to ordinary customary repair, exterior repair of a residential structure, that's a type-two action. That's for a building permit if somebody comes to you and asks for a building permit. But when they come to the planning board, any zoning approval is an unlisted action and requires seeker. Not a type-one. Yes, sir.
They let themselves open for a lawsuit.
No, sir. Your towns, if you're advising them otherwise, they're going to have a lawsuit.
So anyway, Carl.
I'm not gonna argue with you about that.
I'm not gonna argue with you either.
Yeah, so so there's a gentleman's disagreement on whether it applies or not on the seeker form, the short.
If you don't believe me, go call New York State, talk to their people, and they will advise you. That's why we all need four hours of schooling to learn things, okay? To be honest with you, if your planning board is illegal.
I went to college for this, sir.
What?
I went I went to four years of college for this.
Yes, you, but I mean, it's
I'm just telling you, I'm not trying to steer you wrong. I'm just trying to correct it. I'd love to have a conversation, but
Yes, I'm not saying that you haven't, but all people around here, we here don't have that that four hours, okay? Yeah, he's the only one who got the chances. It's easy today. You can do it online. It's not like you have to go. I had to go to one to force it on all my stuff.
Maybe the village attorney should.
So we Carl, we should listen to Carl and do the training online.
I can send everybody a link.
Oh, yeah, why don't you do that? That would be helpful. That would be helpful.
So in layman's terms, because I've kind of do it, what are what is a seeker form and what's uh, you know, what's
Okay, seeker is
Very simple term.
It's uh let's say you do a development, okay? That will need a seeker form. Okay, and smaller jobs, then you have your eyes and you have also your your which is your short form, you know, for for little or pretty things, that's 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 the difference in that, you know? See, like, that's why you have to type one, which is a
Oh, okay.
Where you need your 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 short form, okay? And then in bigger jobs, you need your secrets, your your you know, it doesn't
So you're saying the little ones?
This is just a little stuff, yeah.
So it stands for the state environmental quality review at all.
Right, yeah. Well, anyhow, I have another question.
And basically, let me just, basically what it does in any environmental problems that from the development may come up, like they talk about sewer, they talk about water, they talk about stormwater, they talk about parking, they talk about your comprehensive plan, and it kind of just knits the environmental uh potential problems. And then when you, we didn't do it, but you go to number two, right, section two, and we read all these questions. And then if we have like moderate impacts or large impacts, it can lead to the applicant having to prepare further documentation, right, about the impacts, and they might get a positive deck instead of a negative deck. And then you go to an environmental impact statement, depending basically on the complexity, right, and the of the use that they're proposing and the changes that they're proposing drives the use of that environmental form. So Levi, it's not doing any changes. He's a different use, but not changing anything on the house. So environmentally, there's really nothing that's gonna happen there, right? When when Avi did his development, he's building all the buildings, more sewer, more water. That's where that form would come in handy.
It's a bigger park.
That's when you need a seeker for his job.
Right, Ken, you know, that more intensive use, and 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 I don't know all the nuances of the law.
Parking lots, and as you do a parking lot, you need a seeker. Okay? Anytime you, well, actually, uh I I always get it mixed up. Uh what is it? Is that New York State is two acres?
Uh that's stormwater plan is what you're talking about.
And uh uh the city is five acres or is it vice versa?
Uh the city's two, and then five is permanent.
Okay.
Storm, that's that's the whole thing. That's stormwater.
What Carl's talking about is the level of disturbance on the property. There's a threshold when you cross it that kicks in more permitting and more agencies. Two for New York City and five for the
Well, uh one triggers it with the state, and then five requires permanent, like, so you're catch base, you're not just doing silt fences and hay bales, you're putting permanent retention bonds in. And then two triggers that with the city.
So so that level of disturbance is in the environmental assessment form.
Or any disturbance within a hundred feet of a water course wetland. Waterway.
I I have to admit, I fill out the seeker form all the time. For the projects that I do.
Right.
It it doesn't take me more than forty-five minutes to fill that out, because when you get it from the state now on the EAF map or it comes half-filled out.
Right, right.
And you can't change those answers as much as you want to change those, you can't, you know, like the wet one, the endangered species, all that stuff gets kicked in right from the state, so it's not a big time to fill that out.
No, no.
Right? And I personally, I think it's a little helpful to get that information. And and I'm not sure the nuances of when it's required as you guys are, you two guys. So that's all I got on that one. What's next?
Next? Oh, that's nice. So, all right, I got a question. Our buddy Menelik, Menelik or Avi, I don't think you call him.
He's Menelik?
Menelik. Uh Victor, that's his name.
That's his name, Victor.
Uh he wants to, there's a couple of grounds around, okay? And he wants to make make a club in there, like a club.
Like what?
Like a clubhouse. Clubhouse, you know, clubhouse where you gather and and you know.
Are they in the floodwaters?
Uh wait a minute. It's one here. Uh I I would say it's it's actually allowed in a in a in a uh uh not the commercial, so much as that uh mixed mixed zone. It's allowed in the mixed zone, okay? But it was a garage, which is a U. Oh, the classification is a U, okay? Now it's going to become a a tree.
Is he in the mixed zone?
Yeah. So that the that the we have to, I would say we gotta go in front of the site plan, right?
So where actually, where is it?
That is that is on on uh main on Main Street, on Main Street.
On Main Street?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it looks like it's in the mixed use.
As a part of another use already, as a part of the northland.
I mean?
As a part of the northland?
No, 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 that is across the street, couple of houses down from the firehouse.
So currently a vacant, it's just a structure.
Yes, it's just it's it used to be a garage.
Carriage barn.
And there's no, no, it's not in the front zone or front bay, that that part.
Sure.
Yeah. Right in the in the back of it.
Like by the fire department? Over by the fire department?
No, it's towards 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 uh
Twenty-eight?
Round. Twenty-eight. Okay, it's not in front, front.
Kathy Wilber's old house right next to the firehouse.
Two, 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 three houses past her.
I think the back of that place gotta be in
There there Kathy was that was front, yes, but not this place. Not this place.
So it's a vacant garage right now.
Right.
And he wants to turn it into a clubhouse.
Correct. Which takes about twenty-five people. Okay?
With twenty-five people in this house.
That's right.
Okay, so we we would have to see if it's in the flood zone.
It is not. It is not.
Okay. So do you have something you're gonna leave with us so we can look at it or?
Uh and this is just in the planning stages right now. I just wanna, you know, in case he comes with an application, that I can say, no, you're gonna go to
Does the garage have sewer and water to it right now?
No, it's no sewers, no nothing.
The clubhouse isn't gonna have a bathroom?
That's right. That's usually garage.
What happens with these twenty-five people have to go to the bathroom? Where do they go?
Probably into the house where he owns there. The house has a bathroom.
Okay, so now we have a resident that's used to like, how many people? Five to eight people, and we have twenty?
I I know what you're saying.
Okay, well, we're just listening.
That's that's why that's why I want to ask you, but should should I do with this one? Okay, and then not a two, two, I have a funny feeling he he wants to do it in both of them, unbacked avenue. That's front zone. Okay? So there, of course, not allowed in 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 the in in the in the unbacked avenue, since that is residential. So uh that definitely would need a site review, that one. Then
So this isn't an official application. This is more just for knowledge, right? You just want to tell us what you're thinking about already.
Yeah, right now, you know, it's just in the planning stages.
Okay.
But uh, you know, I mean, you don't not not to worry about the one on Main Main Street, but I think, you know, I kind of
It's that big garage behind one of the big white Vittori's.
Yeah, yeah.
On Wagner, yeah, I know that one.
Well, you're saying on Wagner, it's not allowed.
That's right.
We don't need to worry about that one because it's not allowed, right?
That is, according to to our rules, is not allowed.
Okay, well, then just tell them no on that one.
Uh let me see, I don't have one. Let me just let me see for a second. I think it's not allowed. I got mine at home. No, it's only allowed in the in the in C, but just uh wait a minute.
Club, lodge, or social center. That's what he's pointing to.
Yeah.
Right? R means use permitted by right, site plan approval required.
Yeah, that's what that's Yeah, that's what that says.
So.
And that's in the mix.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, yeah, wait a minute, yeah, wait a minute, yeah, wait a minute, yeah, wait a minute, yeah. Wait a minute, yeah.
If it's a mixed use.
That, that, no, wait a minute, that is, that's, that's. Oh, wait a minute, that is commercial, isn't it?
On Wagner Avenue. Wagner's residential.
One second, one second.
If it's a mixed use, it's not allowed.
No, 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 it's, 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 it's commercial. Come on, this is a one. You're just headed there.
Oh, you want to see?
Yeah, that's what I want to see. There's maybe in a commercial, this is in a commercial. I had it wrong, in a commercial. So it's allowed in a commercial, but they have to have that site plan there. There's a commercial this year.
So there, there's no application yet?
No, 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 nothing yet, yeah, nothing yet, yeah.
Until we have.
He gave me, he gave me this and and I says, that's no good, okay?
Right.
That's no good.
Until we have official application, there's nothing really to react to because we need to look at the.
Right, right.
A complete, a complete application, arguably, I shouldn't make it.
So in other words, I'm gonna refuse it and then it goes into site plan?
Yeah.
He's gonna give me an application and then I have to refuse it, okay? So you get it.
So what, what's a good part of the zoning is the pre-application conference where an applicant can come in, give us the information.
Right.
And review it before the application to kind of steer the ship in the right direction with Carl's help, right? You know, as far as the building code. So if he can, wants to come in and lay like a document out at the next meeting and call it a pre-application conference and meet with the board, Ken, don't you think that would be helpful to?
I think it's always encouraged.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
If we could look at the flood map together, we can see what parcel we're talking about, we can go.
It's not in the flood zone, believe me, because it's amythrom in the back of it.
Yeah, yeah, but that's.
Why, why we, the fire, the firehouse is actually in flood, flood zone because of them two streams coming together. That's why you have all the flooding there.
So why don't, why don't you steer him towards a pre-application conference where they can remember the sketch, we can look at it together and then we can, you know, give him some advice on move forward. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes, no, that's, that's fine. That's why, I don't know how many people it would take because of the sketch here.
Yeah, so when you have twenty-five people there, do they all walk there or do they all?
I don't, I honestly don't know nothing. I don't know nothing. That's why you have to meet it. That's why you have to.
You don't know anything.
Exactly. I don't know nothing. I don't know nothing.
Here's a reason she doesn't come to meetings.
Do you have anything else, Carl?
No, that's it. You can go home now. You see hi to your wife.
Yeah, that would be nice. So anyway, I just want to say thank for everybody's help in this room. We really appreciate it. I hope everybody has a really nice Christmas and a holiday season, board members too.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, and I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second.
Do your drinking at home New Year's Eve.
What?
Do your drinking at home New Year's Eve.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ken.
What's her name?
Thanks, Ken.
That is just, what you call it? That's not the law.